Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council and a special meeting of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Medellin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Folie Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Holly.
Present.
Thank you so much, Alicia. Presenting the invocation this evening from Mount Zion Church is Pastor Sammy Neely. If you'll stand with me, please, for the invocation.
Would everyone please bow their heads? Most heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, Father, thanking you once again for this opportunity to come together, Father, expressing unity and concern for our community. We ask that you bless all those that are here, gathered here today, that we stay unified, we stay civil, and that we do the business that's going to be best for this, our community of Madera. We ask that you bless all of the council members, bless our mayor, and bless all of our citizens today. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Neely. If you'll join me in the pledge, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, I'll ask if any council member is wishing to add or change the presented agenda. I have one small item that I would like to ask of my colleagues. Under item F, this is where we give the council member reports. I would like to yield to council member Garcia, if we can move his presentation up just before presentations, there's something that he would like to say, bring that to council. Is that okay with my colleagues? Are you okay with that, having his council report moved up to the front for just a short period of time?
Yes.
Anybody have a problem with that? We're good with that? Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. With that small change, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public comment, the first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for the members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak under this definition of public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. Collet Choudhury. I'm here tonight to support the workers of the city of Madera. They are hardworking people who we cannot function without. Telling these city workers to take it or leave it is not good-faith bargaining, and you chose these expansive consultants not to negotiate but obstruct these negotiations. This is also very insulting and bad faith. I'm questioning here our city manager and HR manager's ability to negotiate rather outsourcing to some lawyers. Who selected these negotiators? Our new inexperienced city manager? And why were these consultants selected not to negotiate? These city workers have been told for years there was no money for them while many previous city officials lined their own pockets. So remember their executives? Executive salaries? Thirty percent, forty percent increase? I hope you all remember them. Thankfully, those overpaid people are now finally gone. There are plenty of salary savings to share. Local growth is booming, and sales tax revenue is also rising. Crying poor now falls flat. City manager and city council, we now do your jobs and support our Madera workers. Please do that. So please, thank you very much. You're a good one.
Hello, good evening. My name is Claudia Garza. Good afternoon, city council members and mayor of Madera City. My attention here for tonight is to express to you guys the situation of Laguna Knowles and thirty other units that have been displaced from their home.
Ms. Garza, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt. Can you maybe move the microphone a little closer?
Sure.
Please, I want to make sure that everybody can hear you.
Is that okay?
That's better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm here to speak for my thirty-plus neighbors at Laguna Knowles who have been served a sixty-day notice to terminate tenancy and vacate our homes by December twenty-third of 2019. Some of these residents are elderly, sick, disabled, veterans, and/or are hardworking families with children. Two sisters are there with age of mid-eighties and have lived there since 1984. I cannot imagine how cruel and disruptive this is for them. They are afraid and what it is to happen next. We asked management for an extension of time to find a solution to the housing situation, and that was denied. Management is inclined to allow residents any extension, so it is very likely that some of these residents have no place to go. It is also very difficult for these families to save up enough for new deposit first-last month's rent while still paying rent at Laguna Knowles. I understand that there may be an option for residents without place to live at the end of December or temporary relocation for Pomona Ranch Housing on Avenue Twelve. Because of the local housing shortage, we are respectfully requesting this consideration. We can also consider a moratorium on this matter so that the tenants are not affected with the sixty-day termination of tenancy problem and for further future purposes for ongoing families here in our city. We just request that you please consider these options, and thank you for listening tonight. You guys have a blessed night.
Thank you.
And these are for you to follow.
Give them to Alicia. Thank you very much.
Ron Montoya, Madera, California. Oh, I was gonna give my address. We don't need to do that anymore. Shashirigala, everybody. To touch on what she said is, I try to bring some solutions, and every time I come, I try to come up with some solutions. I was in Dos Palos today. They have one vacancy. There's a six-month waiting list. I have a couple of applications. They also own a property in Chowchilla. There is no vacancy, but it's a six-month waiting list. But I think this is an opportunity, and not to mention, I did go to local property management companies here locally. They said, "Good luck," because they just, I get it, it's a business. You know, they have to charge first from last month's rent. But I think this is an opportunity that we all can open up our hearts and our doors and really show what Madera is all about. So I'm willing and opening up my home to a family. Come December, they can stay with my wife and seven feral cats and a couple of kids and just to get off their feet. Trust me, I was homeless in 2006, and granted, Pismo Beach lived out of my car, took a shower at the gym. But I know we're all a couple of paychecks away from being on the street, and it's time to open up our hearts. So I will leave my contact information outside with the gal here. Also, I also want to thank Keith for his hard work and... Regarding the work on Knox, I know it took a while, and I know you're down a lot of people, but I appreciate you and your office's efforts. We do, you know, $200,000 later, we paid $200,000 in community facility district tax initiated by Mr. Medellin and Rob Poitrice. You know, but these, why don't we own the reality of this community facility district tax? You guys are passing on the costs to future homeowners rather than dealing with the developer. Ask their developer for a $200,000 check. Don't pass on the cost to us. You, two months ago, you guys came up and said, "Oh, I'm not going to support CFDs, CFDs." But unfortunately, money's a necessary evil. I understand, but if you guys can just say, "I'm sorry, you guys, we need this," I get it. But it just seems like this slash-and-burn mentality and passing off the cost to future homeowners is not cool, because my neighbor lost his home. He's a veteran, he's elderly, now he lives in Fresno. Okay? Also, if you guys want to help support, keep our Madera County Board of Supervisors to term limits, we need your help with about 3,700 signatures. I collected about eighteen of them in just about an hour and a half. People are frustrated. This is a great way to unite, Republicans, Democrats. I even signed up somebody yesterday. He is a proud supporter of Trump. I'm not. He still signed it. So we can agree to disagree, but we all agree that we need to limit Board of Supervisors to term limits. Enough's enough. Thank you.
Ron Montoya, three minutes left. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Desiree. I am also from Laguna Knowles. I am unfortunately one of the families that has the vacancy of the Red City in the next sixty days. I'm a very hard-working woman. I work for the county. I believe in helping out. I believe, you guys believe, in helping out the county as well, but there's no housing here. There's no low income here. There's no, there's no help here. There's no, nothing. We, I've only been at this residency for less than a year. I moved in December first of 2018. I haven't even been there a year, and I can't even call this a home anymore because I got a move. My kids sacrificed last year their holidays, and they're going to sacrifice it again this year. There's two incomes coming into my home, and there's nothing out there. The cost of rent, the cost of everything, it's just, it's horrible. It's very, very horrible. And, and, and I, and, you know, I'm a go-striker, I'm a go-getter, I'm gonna do what I have to do to provide for my family and for my kids and to do what I have to do to get into, but to pay first, to pay your rent, your deposit, your freshman's, your last month's, that's not even including the application fees that you have to pay, the credit checks. I've already spent $160. I have, I get no aid, I get nothing, hard-working cash money. And I just ask that you guys open your hearts into opening some new homes here. Low income. I go to these low-income places, six to eight, eight-months waiting list. What am I to do with that? You go to a motel, I'm gonna spend $135 a week. What, and then that's not even including storage fees. I just ask that you guys help us, help the community. We need it. We depend on you guys to make these choices for us. And I just ask that you guys open your hearts, and you guys could do something about it. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Garza. I'm from Laguna Knowles Apartments. I've been out searching, and there's no apartments for rent. The ones that are for rent, I just had back surgery, so my income went from $4,000 to $2,000 a month, and I've been told that I don't make enough money now to rent apartments because I don't have the, two-thirds of your income, a third of your income has to go to just rent, and I told them, "Once my back surgery's better, I'll have the money. They won't rent to us, to me, because of that." So I'm disabled. I can't even pack boxes, and they want us to move out in two months. Two months' time, that's right before Christmas. We're just asking you guys, can you get ahold of Laguna Knowles to give us a reprieve a couple months more longer? If you guys can work with housing, give us fair housing. And two, you know, as soon as I get healed, I'll have the money and be able to, if there's any apartments or houses for rent, but there's hardly anything for rent, and when they are, it's in a neighborhood of a sixty-year-old disabled woman I can't let. So, thank you. I just wanted to give you mine, ask for you guys to please help us.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Thank you for being here.
My name is Ubaldo Garcia. I'm here to present my opinions and only my own on my clients. I'm here for two reasons today. For the past ten years, I've been trying to develop some apartments here in Madera to address the housing needs that I've seen growing over the past years. And to give you my experience, I've seen that it's become more and more difficult as we go along with impact fees, permit fees, and just the process in general. At this point in time, I'm proposing three separate apartment projects. One of them is going to be presented tonight. It's eight-plex. I'm presenting a twenty-nine-unit apartment project that I'm financing myself because we're unfortunately in what's called, I believe, a Zone Three, which is the lowest quality for commercial lending. I spoke to as many bankers as I have had time to reach, and none of them are willing to even contact me. Everybody tells me, "Just try to build the apartments on your own and with your own money, and then try to do a takeout loan." It's probably the only option available. I'm looking at potentially getting some grants for my apartments, which is only going to cover maybe ten percent. It's gonna help, but it's, I'm doing it, I'm putting all of my resources into it just because I believe in the mission, and we need to address this issue. The big developers are not going to come to Madera and build the hundreds of units that we need. It's gonna take people like me that are just committed to not making a ton of money and just addressing what needs to be done. Having said that, I'm more than welcome to speak and present the numbers to anybody that is willing to listen. On a separate issue, I've looked, I've been waiting for a right time to bring this up, but it seems like the city's been going through some hard times. I wanted to propose that whenever the city's looking into upgrade their fleets from vehicles, to look into electric vehicles. Right now, the San Joaquin Valley Air has a $20,000 grant for electric vehicles. I've owned a Tesla Model Three for over a year now. I have over 18,000 miles, and my cost per mile has been less than a penny. My maintenance so far has been absolutely zero. My service has been zero. So from economic standpoint, it's a no-brainer. As far as range, mine has a 315-mile range, which is more than any police officer or city employee would drive. There's also free money for electric vehicle charging stations, so if you guys need a six station, twenty station, however many stations you need, free money. You just have to pay for it, and they reimburse you. I'm not sure if you guys have considered that, but again, and for police officers, they do have autopilot, so it's like basically having a co-pilot with the police officer in case they have to run some plates or something. They can set the autopilot on, the car's driving itself, and they could literally just be working out the monitor, and the car, they don't even have to look straight. The car is super safe. I'm more than willing to give you guys a test drive, and police department, too.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Ramon. I also live at Laguna Noles. I've been a single mother. I got there six years ago when my fiance passed away. So it was hard for me to deal with the situation now that we're dealing with. I got grandkids, I go to work back and forth, I work at Chachancy. It's hard for me to raise my grandchildren alone and my son alone all this time. I've been a hard-working woman all my whole life, never asked anything from anyone. Done it on my own without a husband until I recently was going to be married, he passed. I come to Laguna Noles, worked, you know, been there paying my rent month after month, not late, never. Worked as a groundskeeper there for six years also and still work Chachancy and come home every day and then to watch my grandchildren not have a place to stay, that breaks my heart because it has, I mean, it's a fall on me. And I see all these people, all my neighbors that I love and I see are going through a lot. Don't do this. You, you guys need to help us get through this because it is hard. Thank you and God bless you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ramon.
My name is Beatrice, I'm 17-years-old and I'm one of the tenants my mom is at Laguna Noles. And I'm, I might not be going as much as everybody else. My mom, I know my mom is, she has cancer, my grandma's disabled, and I don't like seeing like that, it's a lot of emotional stress on me. And it's, I'm in high school, I'm a senior, and it's like, I can't even focus because, you know, it's like I'm seeing my family go through it and I don't like that. We just need help. Like I see my neighbors and they're very hardworking and it's a lot of stress on me at a young age. Thank you. God bless you, guys.
Thank you, Beatrice.
Hello, my name is Claudia. I'm from New Harvest. I represent Hope Ministry, which is Help Our People Eat. And pretty much what we go out and do is pretty much feed, help the homeless situation. And at this point, you know, I, my heart goes out to these people as well because who wants to see our community go fall apart? Bad enough we already have too many people homeless in this situation. To me, I feel that we should come together and united and just help out these people because this is a situation that needs to be addressed. To me, it's like, it's a big issue because, I mean, I've been in the streets myself, I know what it's like to be homeless, I know what it's like to, to live under there. So I don't have no problems going under the bridges and feeding these homeless people and sheltering them as much as I can, but a lot of us are in a situation, we can't, our hands are tied, we're limited to go out there and do so much. I wish I could take them all in, but we can't. So with that being said, let's just come together in agreement and just pray and fast and do whatever we have to do to help out our community. This community, we, we need to stand together no matter what because this is what we're here for, you know, this is our community and we have to help one another. So with that being said, just, you know, take that into consideration. God bless you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Torres. I also represent Hope Ministries. I'm the Assistant to the Executive Director of Hope Ministry, so I'm kind of like second-in-command. We at Hope Ministries have been greatly distressed of hearing about the situation at Laguna Noles. And we would like to offer our services to, in any way that we can help, to find homes and places for shelter for these displaced people. We're a growing ministry. We, we're just here to represent those who are being displaced, who are having that struggle. And we want to help in any way we can. So I'm more than willing to leave my information with anyone who wants to be interested in helping us out. And we're also willing to work with any organization, with the City Council, with the Action Committee, whoever that may be, to help be part of the solution and not be part of the problem. And we just want to, I just want to publicly and personally thank you, the City Council, for your hard work. And my encouragement to everyone in this room is to come together, find a solution to this problem. And I just want to say that if we can do that, I think we can be an example to the other communities who are having the same struggles. And just one last thing I'd like to share is that I myself am in the process of, of starting my own business of trying to provide affordable housing for people. So I've been doing a lot of research, I've been doing a lot of talking to a lot of people. I'm still not done, I'm still in the process of doing my business plan, but I'm also willing to help with, or reach out to others who are willing to help me and I'm willing to help them in this process because I know that the need in the Central Valley for affordable housing is very great. So I just want to say again, thank you to everyone that's here tonight, and I just ask that God bless us all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Madeline Harris with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. We're a nonprofit that works with communities here in the Central Valley and in the Eastern Coachella Valley on lots of issues, including housing. So we've been in touch with the Laguna Noles residents that you heard from and are hoping to support them any way that we can. But in talking with the residents who, we heard some really heartfelt comments from tonight, one thing that City Council can do and we believe should exercise some leadership in doing to protect Madera residents is to agendize for the next meeting, consideration and discussion of a local ordinance to put a moratorium on evictions and on rent increases leading up to January of 2020. Reason being, this eviction that these people are experiencing, we're seeing lots of evictions like this all around the state. Recently, AB 1482 passed, which will be a rent control and just cause protection for tenants. It's going into effect on January 1st, 2020. And we're seeing all across the state, these 60-day notice evictions for December 29th, December 31st. These landlords aren't even hiding what they're doing, right? And so lots of jurisdictions across the state have been putting local ordinances to put a moratorium on evictions and rent increases to protect residents like these from landlords that are just in this for profit and don't care about people. I was looking up information on the landlords at Laguna Noles. They don't even live here in Madera County, they're out of Orange County. So we, they don't have any vested interest in this community and we really need your leadership here to protect these residents of the City of Madera and other residents who could be at risk if a moratorium isn't issued now. So we're asking for that to be agendized for the next City Council meeting for discussion. One of the documents that Claudia presented with you all is a draft ordinance. So we've done some of the work for you. This is something that you can look at and agendizing this for the next meeting isn't even binding you to a decision, it's just agreeing that we can discuss what is one way that City Council can take some leadership to protect folks like this from homelessness because, let's face it, there aren't 30 open units in the City of Madera right now. And we're also hoping that we can have discussions here on out about a local ordinance that could protect folks here in the City of Madera from January and beyond. So we're hoping that City Council will be open to working with the community on something like that moving forward. And definitely let me know if you have any questions, but we hope to be able to collaborate with you all as possible to protect folks like this from being without a place to, a roof over their heads. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. And a special thank you, we work together through MCTC and you, you really speak for a number of people in the Central Valley. You speak for those that feel that they don't have a voice. You don't speak for them, you give them that voice. And so I appreciate you being here and I appreciate all your hard work. I have your contact information from some things we've worked with in the past, so I'll be ensuring contact to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I forget, I have some fact sheets on 1482 in case that's useful that I'll drop them.
Leave them with Alicia. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Written communications this evening was a memo from Dr. Retana. That, that has been asked to be removed from the agenda, so we will not be addressing Item 1 under Written Communications. And as I asked before, when we approved the agenda, the reason I asked to move Councilman Garcia's Councilman Report to the front is so that we would have this captive audience. I can't really get into detail, all I can tell you is that he's been working very, very hard with, with members of Laguna Noles and the two of us have been on the phone constantly over this, this unfortunate issue. And so with that, I would like to give Councilman Garcia the opportunity to speak on his issues or his council report at this time. With that, Councilman Garcia.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. At this time, taking into consideration the public comments that we had and the, and the troubles that we're having in our community, I'd like to make a motion that we agendize the issue of the tenants and evictions at the Laguna Noles and other communities that are being affected, that our staff prepare a report both at a City Council meeting and the Housing Authority. And I'd like to make that motion.
What I would be looking for, we can have that in the form of a motion, I'm okay with that. We're just looking for, for direction for our city manager to put that on the next City Council meeting, which will be two weeks from this evening. And as Ms. Harris had talked about, it's simply discussion, but to have that discussion regarding a moratorium, what we can do, the ordinance that we can present, of course, it takes time when we put together an ordinance, so time is of the essence. So I would agree that we, we need to move quickly on this and at least start to have that discussion. So if, if the council is, is agreed to that, I'm just looking for a majority or a, there's a motion and a second, so I'll go ahead and take that as a motion if you guys are okay with that. Mayor Potem Montes.
Part of the motion was to put it on Housing Authority, I don't know if we can do that here. Cannot. Okay. So it would just be for the next?
So the next City Council meeting.
And then?
That's a good point.
I just wanted to get a little input from staff. Would that be too, too short of time? To put something thoughtful together, not just?
An ordinance takes 60 days.
Yeah. It's over the next 10 or so days, and we'll make every effort to try to flesh out some concepts. I'm not, I can't tell you with absolute confidence, kind of, we can have a fleshed-out concept. We would probably want some community feedback from both tenants, from community residents, from stakeholders, including property owners. So I'm not too sure if we can have that. However, what we can present are some, some different concepts in terms of how different communities are reacting to this. We, we are up against the clock, obviously, because trying to flesh out an ordinance, unless you adopt an emergency ordinance, ordinances don't typically go into effect until the 31st day after adoption. And then with CEQA regulations in the state, that adds additional timelines and you, and you do have to do CEQA for any ordinance update. So that, that could potentially present some timeline. However, at the next meeting, come, we'll see, come what we can bring back, you know, among staff and come working with our legal counsel.
At the very least, we'll have a discussion.
Absolutely.
Right? Which is about as far as we can go this evening. So, so thank you very much, Councilman Garcia. With that, I have a motion and a second to have the discussion regarding a moratorium on the next City Council meeting.
Are we making a motion or are we given direction?
It's, it's only direction.
Okay.
It's only direction.
So just wanted to make sure, right?
Right. And, and, and before we give that direction, I just want to be sure that we have the majority of the council that's willing to do that. And it sounds like we are.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that because that wasn't part of the agenda, but I would certainly agree to give direction to our city manager and bring that back as I suggested, future agenda item.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comments or questions from council? Hilda, are you okay with that? Do I need to move forward with that motion or do we have a direction?
I believe Councilmember Rodriguez has clarified the intent here is to provide direction to have the city manager, working with our office, to bring back options for the council, including a potential moratorium ordinance.
Thank you very much for that. And with that, everybody who spoke at public comment and for being here, thank you so very, very much for, for your honesty and for your courage. And we will continue to have this discussion. And so it's not on the agenda yet, but what's scheduled to be two weeks from this evening, that discussion. So you're certainly welcome to join us that evening and to continue to give us your input. Thank you very, very much. We will now move into presentations. We'll have a couple of presentations. The first one, we have an employee recognition presentations. I'll, I'll maybe wait just a minute or two. Thank you. Thank you all for being patient. As I had mentioned, we have an employee who's, who's been with us for 28 years and has a number of project under, projects under his belt. And the best way to describe Les Jorgensen is the happiest, best-smile guy in, in the halls of, of the City of Madera. So with that, for the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Keith Helmuth, our engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we wish to honor a man that is retiring from the city after 28 years. That's Les Jorgensen, of course. Les has been here since 1991. He, he came as part of a contract as a part-time employee in the Engineering Division. He was actually hired by Nick Pavlovich, a former city manager. He was hired with the intent of working on Measure A projects. He went through those Measure A projects, kicked them out, and then moved into what is now known as Measure T. And he's played an outsized role in all those projects. I'm going to go ahead and work through some other stuff and then I'm going to go ahead and go through the projects. It's a, it's a, it's a lengthy list. I've known Les for 14 of 28 years, 14 of the 28 years that he has been here. In that time, I've seen him provide incredible contributions to the city. Those include projects such as the Ellis Overcrossing, the Fourth Street, SR 99, Overcrossing, the Related Improvements, that's right out here in front. It includes the first drought-tolerant landscaping that we did in the, in the city, the SR 145 Crossing down, down the street over by the Carl's Jr. And the list goes on and on. If we were to go ahead and total up those projects, they, in fact, we did. In today's dollars, they would go past $100 million. It's that many projects, that much money that he's contributed to the city in terms of kicking out projects. Now, Les has always delivered more than we could hope for. If he took on a project, you knew he would navigate the waters no matter how complex they might be. You knew that if you asked for his assistance, he would do his very best to help, he would in fact do that. That applies to small and big things. Les does truly seem to enjoy the art of engineering and completing the transportation projects that he's working on and then delivering to the community. To this day, I'm not sure if he stayed on for so many years because, before retiring because he enjoyed it so much or, or because we just kept coming up with more projects and he, he wouldn't say no. Towards the end, I started to be, get a little bit careful about saying, mentioning a project because I, I knew he would be, be ready to go and, and work on it. He's always there for us. And, and I was always grateful, grateful for that. So Les's retirement is bittersweet for me and I know for the others in the department, we all like and love Les. I count Les as a friend, in addition to the invaluable resources he's provided to the city. I will miss him every week, but I suspect he will come by from time to time. With that, I'm going to go ahead and work through the, the slides here. I, I tried to figure out a way to go ahead and go through and describe it, but in the end, it's, it's a list of projects and it does seem to go on and on, which you'll see. These projects are generally in chronological order. I think they're starting back in about 1992 and they go all the way up to the present. The bold ones, we do actually have pictures in here. So the Schnorr Street Bridge, everybody crosses it regularly throughout the year. The man behind the project, the one who administered it, is Les Jorgensen. The list goes on, the list goes on. The SR 145 Crossing at, at, at the 99 on Olive Avenue. Everybody should recognize that, that was completed in the last about eight years or so. And the list goes on. Two more projects in bold, the Transit Center Building on East Street and the Pan American Building. There's the Transit Center and the Pan American Building. And the list goes on. end, it's a list of projects that does seem to go on and on, which you'll see. These projects are generally in chronological order. I think they're starting back in about nineteen ninety-two, and they go all the way up to the present. The bold ones, we do actually have pictures in here. So the Schnorr Street Bridge, everybody crosses it regularly throughout the year. The man behind the project, the one who administered it, is Les Jorgensen. The list goes on, the list goes on. The SR one forty-five Crossing at the ninety-nine on Olive Avenue. Everybody should recognize that, that was completed in the last about eight years or so. And the list goes on. Two more projects in bold, the Transit Center Building on East Street and the Pan American Building. There's the Transit Center and the Pan American Building, and the list goes on. Gateway Drive, Almond Avenue to, Almond Avenue to Olive Bridge Overcrossing and the Ellis This would be the Gateway Drive Overcrossing, you can look at it from above these pictures and from the freeway below. The Ellis Overcrossing, same perspectives, all big projects for the city, all administered by Les. Three more projects, Fourth Street Sunset to Gateway with the SR ninety-nine Overcrossing, the new Transit Center Building, the fire station, he played key roles in those projects as well. The Fourth Street Project, he administered fully, and he played key roles in the Transit Center and the Fire Station. More pictures. The last two projects, the Ellis Bridge and the Fourth Street Overcrossing, this is where we started trying to go ahead and up our game, and we started adding additional items to the bridges. You'll see that we have rockwork on there, not a lot of bridges have rockwork, and anything we were able to go ahead and work in, Les helped us to get there. And this is the ribbon cutting down below on Fourth Street. That's conceptual of the transit building, that's close to complete at this point. That did receive an APW award, will be presented that in the next week or so. And then the fire station. It will be complete before January. And this is a map of the projects, you see them throughout the city. This particular map, I know everybody can't see it, but it was difficult to go ahead and get this together, but it shows, it shows the projects chronologically, and you can actually see them in color from when they were coming online. I think that is the last slide. Now with that, I think the mayor has a certificate to go ahead and present Les, and following that, Les will hopefully provide us a few words.
Thank you very much, Keith. I think it's appropriate to say that when Les started, my mother was on the city council, and she welcomed you. And now here I am, a generation later, saying congratulations and good luck. But with that, why don't we bring Les Jorgensen up here with a huge round of applause? You know, it really does go beyond the projects. As you can see, the list did go on and on and on. But Les, Les the man, Les the person, you would truly be missed, as Keith had said, not just your experience, but your friendship and your wisdom, and that big smile will certainly be missed. But you've certainly earned it, my friend. And on behalf of the city council, all of us up here, all the staff, we want to wish you all the best, we want to wish you all the well, and we want you to pinky swear that you'll come back and visit us from time to time. Would you do that?
I've already promised, Keith, I'd do that.
Great. Then accept this and give us a few words if you wouldn't mind, Les.
Get the pinky, man, get the pinky.
Get the pinky in the trunk.
It was easier to be it before you folks, when I had problems for you folks to solve, rather than to try to present a recognition that I most appreciate of. One of the things, there's a few things that I do need to shed for, making sure that you fully understand that all these things didn't happen by myself alone. There's, like Keith was saying, the first city engineer we had that had most of his time was Leon Lancaster, and then Keith came on, and I can tell you that the guidance and the confidence that they had in me was very much appreciated, and couldn't find two better city engineers anywhere in the state of California. And as I've said earlier, the city council has been extremely supportive, and the number of times that I've been here presenting problems on certain projects and delivery issues and dealing with either prop owners and the other items that go into project successfulness, and making sure it's the right project and the right design for the city of the, the community of the city. You folks have stood behind me the whole time, approving my recommendations and making my job much easier. I appreciate you folks and all the council members before you that treated me really fair. Thanks, thank you very much. As any project delivery, it all starts with a development, and then it gets into construction. And I'll have to say, and I want to grant, congratulate, and appreciate all of the city department heads and their staff for their continuous support in reviewing my work and making sure that it's consistent with the projects that were tied to the various departments, whether it be Public Works or Planning, or the Engineering Department, or Parks, Building, all of those departments provided access and information that helped my job be a little bit better and make sure that what I was doing was correct and online. So your city staff and the department heads always had a great contribution towards the delivery of these projects, and I wish to thank all of you for your, for your support. As with any projects that were listed there, I just did a little bit of computation myself. It required the work of over twenty-five civil engineering firms that prepared the construction documents that Keith and I and the other city engineers developed for design for their completion of the project. And along with those twenty-five groups was another couple dozen of support engineering staff from geotechnical firms, from appraisers for right-of-way, the environmental work, all of the other things that go back into making sure the project is fully and complete. It wouldn't go without saying also that I need to recognize the support and the cooperation for all of the folks that I had to coordinate with in delivering these projects, such as Madera County Transportation Commission, Caltrans, PG&E, ATNT, Comcast, Madera Irrigation District, Union Pacific School Districts, and numerous, numerous individual property owners. So it was, it was a very exciting twenty-eight years in getting this, all these projects done, and it was, it's really an honor, I can hardly describe how much of an honor it is to be part of, to have in hand in delivering all these projects for the city and for the One of the things that, as Keith tried to mention, is Nick Pavlovich and the two council members at that time, Mark Scialzo and Pat O'Rourke. I had an interview with them, and they kind of twisted my arm and almost wouldn't let me go without signing a contract for at least two years to get the Measure A project started and delivered. And after the two years, if things were moving along pretty good, and I expected somebody to take my place, unfortunately, for me, it didn't happen, so I signed another contract, only this time it didn't have a limitation on it. So to those, that three people there was the start of what's happened over the past twenty-eight years. It's, well, I appreciate everybody and all of the activities that I was able to participate in. And the, when I came here in December of ninety-one, it had been a couple of months after Roberta, my wife, and I both retired at the same time, looking forward to a wonderful retirement together. And so when the offer was made, it's just, it was a dream for me to come true, to continue with my engineering career, because it's something I really, really cherished. And so really, if you really want to congratulate somebody for more longevity here, you're looking at the little lady over here in white. My wife, my wife, Roberta, who has given up twenty-eight years of our continuous companionship. I had to leave home on a regular basis to come to Madera, but she's been fortunate to, I've been fortunate for her to turn me loose and be able to participate in providing the various projects for the city of Madera and the community of Madera. The one thing I would, I would want to say personally is that I was born and raised in Reedley, a small town, and Madera was very similar to the small-town atmosphere, and I really consider Madera my hometown. It's been a, I don't know how else to explain it, it's just been a wonderful experience to participate with a, with a staff, the people of the city that I had to deal with, and all of the other professional organizations that helped me along. And so I think I've said enough. Thank you, thank you all so very much. Les, thanks again, and congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely. Councilman Holly.
Les, I thank you and I, Les, Les, before you, stay down there. This, Councilman Holly, way over here. I see your eyesight got bad, huh? Put you back to work. But Les, I just want to thank you over the years that you have worked for the city of Madera. I remember when you came on board, I came on as a planning commissioner.
I remember that.
Yeah, we came on about the same time, so I've been around this as long as you have, but you've done more work than I have, and we appreciate it very much. And I told you the other day, you couldn't go nowhere. Remember me telling you that?
I remember telling you.
Yeah, so I still meant that.
I'm sorry, I lied.
Yeah. But I, you know, wish you a great retirement, hope you and your wife do get to retire this time, and God's blessings.
We will, we will. And unfortunately, I forgot, I put out here in the audience, I've got my two sons.
Okay.
Gary and Nancy, and my wife, Roberta, what's his name, Brian, and then my granddaughter, Nikki, supported me here. And the other thing is, just a little story, I'm kind of a homebody, the first house we lived in, we lived in twenty-five years. The house we lived in now, we've been living in thirty years. And I've worked with Fresno, with the credit union, now Noble Credit Union, and the staff and some of the board members are here, and I had forty-seven years with them. I wanted not moves very fast from one job to another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Les said he kept, he kept bringing problems to the council. You brought issues, they weren't problems, they were issues, and we worked them all out. Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt your beautiful speech, but they were issues, and I think we worked through all of them. And we did so by working together, and it was said earlier, when a lot of the people during public comment were talking about Madera and working together, and whatever the issue is, for whomever the issue is, that we work together. And I think Madera is on the map, and we're known for that cooperation and that collaboration, whether it's city and county or a school district, regardless. And I'm very proud of that fact, that we're known for a community that works together. And recently, that was, that was shown. Our diversity in Madera is also something to be proud of. Madera is, has a very diverse culture, and I believe that's what makes us, what makes us who we are. And the SIC community is here with us this evening to share. Last week, they provided lunch and had a luncheon and invited members of the community to really just share about who they are. And I have to tell you that it's something we need to do more often with everyone. We had an opportunity to ask questions and learn about the SIC culture, about their customs, about their community, and about who they are, and it's very fascinating to do so. We have a large member of people in the SIC community that have been here in the Central Valley, in this area, for over a hundred years. They're small business owners, they're in IT, they're in agriculture, they're in our military, they're United States military, and they serve proudly. And so I wanted to bring them here this evening for a couple of reasons. One is to recognize that fact, and two, they have a wonderful presentation, Guru Nanak and his five-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, but I believe it's his birthday, and we will hear from now who is a dear friend of mine, who is representing the Jakara Movement out of Fresno and also here in Madera, and his name is Nindip Singh, and he's going to give a small presentation and continue educating us, if you will, and sharing a little bit about the SIC community. Mr. Singh, please, if you will.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and of course, respected members of our neighborhoods, our communities, and our families here in Madera. You know, there's something special about Madera, this is a kind of homecoming for me as well, this is where I, where I went to school, so anytime my, the home of my parents still live here in Madera, it's always kind of a wonderful opportunity to get to be back in the community and to share, actually, with members of our community. And I wanted to echo Mayor Medellin's comments about the ability for Madera to sort of work together. I think our friends and family and our neighbors at the Laguna Noles kind of shared some of their plight, but to be able to see something begin to move, that really says something to the spirit of Madera, so really want to commend you for that, and if any of our, if any of our neighbors are still here. So I'm going to open with a very short invocation that I'll, that I'll explain about, because I want you also to have some idea about the values, the sounds, and the rhythms within the SIC household. So we start with Ikonkar, Satnam, Kartapur, Nirpau, Nirvar, Akalmurt, Ajuni, Sapang. So anytime SIC start their prayers in the mornings, these are the first few lines that are read. It says, "There's one being. All of us are connected together because there's one essence that unites all of us. It is true, it is that, it is a creator, it is without fear, without enmity, self-realized, and through the Guru's grace." And so on this occasion, in this November, I get to share about Guru Nanak and specifically about the SIC community here in Madera. And I have to say that the mayor is a quick learner, because he remembered right away that it was SIC and not Sikh, so I appreciate that from the, from the get-go. I just want to open up a little bit of quick facts, so you get to know your SIC neighbors. The greeting that we oftentimes, when we first meet each other, is Sat Suryakal. What that means is, it means the truth is eternal. And as those of you that joined us at the VFW last week, I had a very touching story, actually, from Pastor Unger at the Rescue Mission, where he said, a woman that was there at the Rescue Mission who could not speak English, he said, "I just folded my hands," because I remembered that from your conversation, and she folded her hands, and that was just a way that we could connect, and it was just a smile on her face. And so when we greet each other, that's actually how we do it, is with folded hands. And so, when we greet each other, that's actually how we do it, is with folded hands. As the mayor noted, the word is Sikh, not Sikh. And the reason is, people say, "But I have Sikh friends that say Sikh." And the reason is, is because if I say I am Sikh, most of you will say, "I hope you feel better." So, that's sometimes what we say to non-Siks, but as the mayor got it correct, that the word is Sikh. In terms of key teaching, it's really about recognizing that humanity and all, that there is one creator that connects all of us. Sikhie, as we refer to it, is the fifth-largest world religion. There's a unending belief in equality and justice, and all Sikh Gurdwaras, and I'm going to speak a little bit more about this, serve a meal, a common meal called Langer. And Langer is open to all, independent of gender, of caste, of class, of racial disparities, anything, it's a meal that we all come in together and partake in. Why this November is very special for the Sikh community, I actually had the opportunity to travel to Yuba City this past weekend. And there, 200,000 Sikhs from across California came together, actually, in a, celebrating Guru Nanak and what we call the Nager Githan. And 2019 marks the 550th year of his birth, where he taught that common message of humanity and gave a new path. Three common themes he always touched upon was Nam Japana, to always remember the divine in anything and everything you do, Girat Karna, to work hard and honestly, and Vajn Chakna, to share with others. A little bit about the community here in California, as the mayor shared, there, the community in California has been here at least almost 120-plus years. And it's always been, actually, here in the San Joaquin Valley. The first Gurdwara, or religious institution of the Sikhs, was opened in 1912 up in Stockton, California, so just a little bit up the 99. And the San Joaquin Valley, and it's largely been due to agriculture, became the home to the largest number of Sikhs by the 1930s. They've worked in agriculture, in the lumberyards, and even building the railroads. Sharing a little bit about the community here in Madera, it's a fascinating community because it's sandwiched between two much larger communities. There's a huge community in Merced County, especially in Livingston, and a huge community in Fresno County, but the Madera County has been here as well for 50, 60-plus years, largely tied to agriculture, transportation, health services, and small businesses. We have in this room entrepreneurs that work extremely hard every day to feed their families, but also to provide new services for the community here in Madera. It's a fast-growing community, especially on the east side of the county, but more and more Sikhs are finding Madera to be home. And one key fact is that Punjabi is actually the third-most spoken language in Madera. I actually had an opportunity to engage with County Clerk Martinez, and she was actually unaware of that fact, where she had grown up here, and she had actually assumed it was Urdu, because there is a very historic sort of Pakistani doctor community here, physician community here, and many, many, who had been taking care of many communities here. But actually, the vast majority of the residents here are actually of the Punjabi Sikh community, and they make up two-thirds of what we call the Asian community of Madera County. And Punjabi, along with English and Spanish, is a required language on the ballot forms, actually, here in Madera County as well. A little bit of just about the institutions, we have two Sikh Gurdwaras here in Madera. The largest one is on 14th Street, there's another one on 18 and a half. The Jakara movement, we work largely in the youth, with the youth, so we have, in both high schools, both Madera High Schools, we have chapters, as well as Punjabi radio is a, and as well as we have media are sort of blossoming and continuing to grow here in Madera County. And really, we're just here to extend a hand wherever we can be of service, and really appreciate being welcomed here in Madera for so long, but also looking for new ways for us to continue to be more civically engaged, to find common understandings, and find common ways to work together. Thank you so much to the, to the mayor, to the city council, and of course, to all of our friends, family, and residents here in Madera on this 550th anniversary of Guru Nanak. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know I spoke to Congressman Jim Costa, who wanted to be here this evening, and he could not be, but I believe he sent the next best thing all the way from Washington, D.C., and this is his chief of staff we have with us this evening from Costa's office, Mr. Juan Was there anyone else that wanted to say anything?
And just as a quick invite, we have, as I was sharing, we had that parade in Yuba City this past weekend. On December 1st, we have one actually just a little bit south of here in Fowler. We would love for you to join us. My contact information is there, if you need a tour guide to kind of help guide you, and please, please bring an empty stomach, because you will, you will be fed far more than you would like to be. Thank you so much.
Once again, as I mentioned before, I think when we learn about one another, that's what makes a community great, is just, is just knowing about one another, and I'm very, very happy that you all can attend and be here. With that, from the office of the mayor, I want to present you with this certificate recognizing the 550th anniversary, recognizing the wonderful people in our community, that you're extending an olive branch, if you will. We need to find that common ground. I think we're all looking for the same thing, and once we find that common ground with one another, again, Madera will be a much, much better place. And so with that, I would also like to take a picture, again, with council up on the dais, with anybody who's willing to do so.
Please.
Yeah.
Well, everybody gets up there, I'll give you guys some background noise.
You're going to do this too?
Oh, sure. I've actually designed a couple of projects for the Sikh community, and I was very ignorant of their culture, which was really amazing to get to know. They're really welcoming, as they said, they have amazing food, and I've been to about five or six of their, of their, I call them temples because I cannot pronounce it, Guwad? Guwad, so, yeah, they're wonderful people, and absolutely, I was really terrified when I walked into the first, to the first one, but I've been to six at this point, and they're really great people. So thank you for giving us your insight.
Sir, how you doing?
How are you?
I'm good.
I caught that one, see there, ain't hard to learn.
Councilmember, yeah, we need them too.
Mr. Andy?
Where are you?
I'm in front.
All right, another camera? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
And a steady.
Standing right next to me.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Mr. Dillon, it's good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We settled in now? We're moving on to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed separately. I will ask at this time if there's anybody in the audience wishing to discuss a particular consent item. Please come forward. I will ask if there's a council member wishing to further discuss or pull a consent item. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve consent calendar.
Calendar as presented.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded twice to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public hearings, our first public hearing this evening, item C1, this is a public hearing relating to the approval of Energy Services Agreement with NG Services U.S. Inc.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can you just formally open the public hearing? For my memorandum that I sent regarding public hearings, just formally say this is a public hearing.
Okay, I thought, I thought I did in the beginning when I said this is a public hearing relating to, so do I need to be a little more formal than that?
Yeah.
At this time, I will open the public hearing related to item C1. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and old Rodriguez City Manager. The item before you this evening is consideration to enter into a contract agreement with NG Energy for roughly $18.8 million. This is an item that first started, it, I believe, back in 2015, if memory serves me, and it's been an ongoing project that the city's been actively engaged with, come with NG. About 16 months ago, the project picked up some steam, and I apologize, I'm looking for the presentation right now that I thought was on, on here. Excuse me really quick. Can you chat with Joseph? Can I ask him if he put the presentation on here? Thank you. And so this project begun, it picked up some steam about, about 16 months ago, where NG began to look at every city facility that we had, and that was largely in an effort to identify any energy conservation efforts, or anything we can do to try to help make our community more sustainable, and quite frankly, to save the city some additional funds, and here's the presentation. And so the process itself, there was a significant amount of staff resources that went into it, along with NG. Up to this point, the city has not actually formally paid NG, because if, if the council this evening were to, or converted, elect to not move forward with the project, at that point, the city would not be responsible for payment to NG. With that being said, though, this evening, there are a menu of options, of possibilities that include the police department, the public works yard, the wastewater treatment plant, the Frank Bergon Center, the Pan American Center, both fire stations, city hall, county country park, and I'm sure I'm missing a couple of others. However, so with that being said, so this project, the financing is not before you this evening, so unfortunately, we do not have specific numbers, however, prior to engaging in a financial consultant, what we decided to do was bifurcate the process, where we would have council consider and provide direction on the improvements, and then what we've done, we've engaged Ken Decker, the city's financial consultant, to look at some financing options. So this evening, again, it's a contract to engage NG for the $18.8 million in terms of the project itself, and at this point, with council's blessing, what we would do, the second step would be to begin to flesh out some potential financing options. Those financing options, we are planning on attempting to bring them to you either the next meeting or the, or the first meeting in December. There's a couple of moving parts, and we're looking at, at either 15-year loans or 20-year loan. At this point, we are looking at financing the entire amount, so the $18.8 million. So up to this point, in, in terms of engaging or beginning this project, the city, I'm going to say, would put out $0. However, that could potentially be a little deceiving, because the city has invested staff resources up, truly up to this point, to make sure that we've reviewed the contract with assistance from our city attorney. We've had various city staff involved, where we've discussed potential options, what makes sense long-term for the city. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to NG, who's, who's come before this council. I know in my 11 months here, I believe this may be his third or fourth time coming up, just to provide an overview and to provide some additional detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, happy to be back here. So, as the city manager mentioned, we actually did a study session here in August, and there's really hasn't been much of a change except one, so, in the project. And so, you know, what I'd like to do is, I'm probably going to go through this, you know, fairly quickly, but please stop me at any time, and if you have questions, yeah, you're welcome to, I'll give you as much detail as you want. So, so we did a council study session back on August 7th, and then we worked with the city staff and city attorney to finalize the contract, which was done a few weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. And the next step, I'm going to take a very brief moment to tell you a story, it'll be very brief, so, you know, I usually don't make mistakes, but I did make one two weeks ago. I walked into the city manager's office, and I said, "We've been holding our price for one year now, we need a price increase." I tell you, he twisted my arm so hard that it's still hurting, and I walked out with a reduction of $275,000. That's how good a negotiator I am. So, so we dropped our price by $275,000. So that is the only change between what we presented to the council in August and today. There is no other change in the scope or anything else. So, you know, your city manager did a wonderful job, and we're very happy to, you know, provide the price reduction and make the project more attractive to the council. So the next step, of course, will be the financial RFP that I think is due in a couple of days. So, project goals, we've gone through this several times, I think we meet all these project goals, including that dance, the Vision Madera 2025 Plan, because it's all about sustainability and safety, and I'll, so, we've addressed every one of these items. So the scope of work, just to recap, we are doing air conditioning, all your older air conditioning is being replaced across all of, pretty much, all the city hall, city buildings that we are aware of that had older air conditioning, so you see all the lists there. Solar systems, wherever there was space to install solar, the two large one of projects, of course, are at the wastewater treatment plant, as well as, well, there are two projects at the wastewater treatment plant, the 1,051 kilowatt project is for avoiding the electricity cost at the wastewater treatment plant, and the 2189 kilowatt project is located at the wastewater treatment plant, but it's to avoid the cost at other facilities, with city facilities, mostly water wells, which don't have the space to do solar. There's interior and exterior lighting, we're converting all of it to LED, there's some switchgear replacements to make it, you know, for city. Community road and safety improvements, you know, this is something that is really exciting for us and should be for the city. We're providing 150 streetlights, where there are, you know, streetlights which are totally dark, and so, so that'll be an excellent project. I know somebody mentioned EV charging stations in the public common period, and we are providing five at city hall, five at public works, and they do come, they are actually reimbursed by combination of PG&E and the South Joaquin, the Clean Energy, Air Quality Management District, what am I missing here, South Joaquin, Air Pollution Control District, I'm getting confused between Southern California Air Quality Management District and this one, sorry.
It's a long acronym, I'm sorry, Ashu, Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ashu, you know, I look at the HVAC and EMS upgrade, so when I look at all the buildings there, I can see that most of them probably do need that, but the use- there, I can see that most of them probably do need that, but the youth center, can you, is there, what is it that we're doing with the HVAC there? I mean, I figured that would be a newer building, so.
Yeah, so the youth center, so let me go through the, there is a detailed scope. Let's see. I don't see any detail, so I'll have to, that might actually be, I think, oh, yeah, I remember now. We're only doing an energy management system. We're not replacing, so that's why I should have been clear. It's not just air conditioning. So this is HVAC and/or EMS upgrade. So that's, at the youth center, it's just a control system. We're not replacing any air conditioning.
Got you. Thank you.
Thanks. And we're also very, you know, happy to report that as part of this program, we are funding from our, from our social fund, 10 internships for high school students to come and work at, you know, with the city staff and city council, and it'll be for one summer, basically, so six to eight weeks. And we'll pay them whatever the rate is. It's the minimum wage, basically, yeah. So that's the scope of work. The financial analysis, again, it's preliminary at this point, because, you know, the financing still has to be decided. You know, we've assumed an interest rate of 2.85%, and it depends where it comes out, but I think, I think we should be fairly close here. I've seen interest rates much lower than that nowadays. This is a really great time for the city to finance a project, because interest rates are at historic lows. So we just did another, facilitated another financing up north, and it was 2.7% for 20 years. So it should be, should be an attractive rate. So nothing's changed here, same energy savings, solar savings, electricity saving, the operation and maintenance savings for not, for avoiding ongoing repairs for air conditioning and lighting. There are some incentives for PG&E. The project carries a 20-year guarantee, and we monitor it for five years. There's, we do all the work related to the solar project, all the maintenance, all the cleaning, everything is included by us. And we've structured the lease payment, at least in this cash flow, to come to a constant net savings of $325,000. You know, it depends on your financial advisor, how he'll like to structure it. So as Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, it might do a 15-year, which will mean, it's a difference like, you know, when you do a 15-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage, you end up paying, you know, less interest, but your payments will be larger. So you'll see less cash flow in the beginning years, but then you'll see overall savings will be much higher in that option. So it's entirely up to the council and staff, how you would like to structure the financing. So we just broke it out with, in different funds. Each fund is positive. General fund has savings of $81,000, which is, which is rather unique, because usually, whenever we do these kind of projects, the general fund is the one fund which we are always struggling to keep positive. So we're happy that, you know, we could, we could do that here, that there were enough good projects to make the general fund positive. Sewer fund, of course, is the biggest beneficiary of this project, and so is the water fund that's basically the solar project that's being allocated to the wells mostly. Benefits, there's so many of them. You save 29 million, you're avoiding 60% of your electricity spend. The reason you can't avoid more than that is the, you don't have enough location to do solar, and also there are streetlights that have already been upgraded to LED, and so that's, that's quite a large percentage of your annual bill. Hedge against rising energy costs, you know, electricity prices are really going through the roof. PG&E has asked for a 14% increase for next year. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good thing if you can produce your own energy and save energy. You're using savings to replace the old mechanical and electrical equipment. You know, you're saving a lot of your maintenance staff's time with, you know, new HVAC, new lighting, making the parts, switchgear more safe, streetlights, we always, you know, that's a, that's a great benefit of this project. You know, encourage the next generation to participate in Madera city governments. I think that's really important, and that we're really proud that we could help the city do that. And of course, there's some environmental benefits. If your council decides to approve this project today, we'll, of course, start some preliminary work, because it'll be, and it'll be, we understand it'll be at our risk, because if financing doesn't get approved, there's no cost to the city, and the contracts are not void. So, but we will start our engineering, and hopefully we'll get financing approval maybe in November or December, and then I think it'll take us 15 months to build the project. So that's the presentation. Would be happy to answer any questions, or if Mr. Rodriguez has some comments.
I will stay a little away from him.
So just a couple of, you know, can really key points to stress here this evening. So the project costs themselves are roughly $18.8 million. We've assumed, so the net savings that Ashu went over a short time ago, those are all based on assumptions that we have today. Will, as we flesh out the, so the financing, based on council's direction, we'll bring that back to council, and we'll have concrete numbers. So again, there are a handful of assumptions that I think are important to really go over. One of them is, so the project costs themselves is not an assumed cost, that's a real cost, because that's a quotation from Ashu. However, the interest right now, we assumed it at 2.85% over 20 years. Depending on how the market does, that could come in a little bit lower, it can come in a little bit higher, we can go for, from 20-year financing to 15-year financing. The other key point here is that there's an assumed 4.3% annual escalation clause for energy costs from PG&E. If PG&E costs hypothetically don't go up in the next year, then obviously, our assumption was wrong, if it goes up high. So if it goes down lower, that's, you know, we potentially won't realize those savings. However, if the escalation is higher than 4.3%, then that's obviously a benefit, and that really goes to one of Ashu's points, which is the third bullet point, which is we're hedging against rising energy costs. So that's obviously a benefit. We obviously don't want the cost to go up, because that impacts basically everyone in the city, and quite frankly, everyone in Northern California. So that's really bad for our local economy, so we definitely don't want that, but that's one of the positives. The other thing on this item, too, is why almost everything's guaranteed, and there's operation and maintenance contract included in here for NG, which begins at roughly $60,000 per year in year one. By the end of year 20, it increases to about $106,000 per year. That, that equates to a 3% annual increase every single year. So what the city would be paying NG increases 3% a year, and that was highlighted on, on one of the tables. Actually, I'll go back to it right here. It's, so it's right here. And so it's going up 3%. And the other key point to highlight is, we are proposing 150 streetlights, so it would be solar streetlights. Those would not be, well, at council's direction, we do not have the locations. So at some point, we would come back to council, and council would tell us exactly where they would want them to go. Ideally, those would not be replacing existing streetlights, there would be new streetlights in our community, because obviously, we have a relatively large number of neighborhoods that are not lit at night. And so that's, and that's one of the benefits. For that example, it's, it's not necessarily a savings to the city, because we're not taking out existing streetlights where we're currently paying our electric bills, rather, that's a community benefit, where we're adding to it to make our community a lot safer. And so that's a, so that's definitely a positive.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rodriguez, Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Yeah, and on that slide, Ashu, and maybe this is for both of you, because on your staff report, you're showing anticipated energy savings of 29 million less operation and maintenance costs, but here, it seems like the operations and maintenance cost has already been accounted for. Is that something separate?
So there's operation maintenance savings? There is.
Your costs, I'm sorry, not your savings.
Operation and maintenance cost is the cost of maintaining the solar projects and the streetlights. So we are going to be replacing all the batteries, because the batteries will last around six to seven years, so we'll prob, we have, you know, we're going to replace them at least twice, and as many times as they're needed. We're guaranteeing a 20-year, you know, 20-year, we're providing a 20-year guarantee on the streetlights. So that means we'll replace all the batteries. The only thing we are not doing on the streetlights is cleaning the panels, and it's not really needed very frequently. So, so that's the cost. It's our cost.
Ashu, I'm sorry, I get the cost. The question that I'm asking is, our staff report shows anticipated energy savings of 29 million less operation and maintenance costs, but here, it seems like you've already accounted for that. So I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm reading it correctly. Is it a 29, anticipated 29 million, or can we anticipate less because of the operation and maintenance cost?
No, it is 29 million.
So I actually wrote that sentence in the staff report, and because the, so the overhead is showing, it's 29 million, it's $29 million after 30 years. The vast, I'm not going to say the vast majority, well, yeah. So the vast majority of the savings come after year 20, based on a 20-year loan. However, at that point, not everything's, so NG's not providing a warranty past 20 years. On some cases, on the solar panels, there is 25. Right. Right, so I'm, so I'm assuming that there are things that the city would have to foot the bill in year 21, and in some cases, for the solar panels, potentially after year 26. And so because of that, the assumed savings is 29 million, however, that's assuming that everything's working properly, and, and I would hate to tell council, it's going to be exactly $29 million, where we can probably assume that there are certain things that are probably going to need to be replaced in year 26, and so we would want to subtract that. And that's why I actually added that sentence, because I wouldn't want anyone to think it's exactly $29 million. In theory, if some of our assumptions are incorrect, for example, we built in 4.3% energy, the 4.3% for the escalation clause, which is right here, assuming that's higher than in theory, that $29 million can be much greater, but, but I wouldn't want to say that with a straight face, to say that's exactly what's going to happen, because again, it's an assumption that we had to make based on past practices. And, and that's one of the industry standards, which Ashu, he's the expert, and I think.
Well, we use 5% everywhere, and it's fairly accepted, well-accepted. So we're using 4.3% because when we started working on this project, we looked at the city's actually escalation on their bills, and we came up with 4.3%. But, you know, electricity prices after PG&E's bankruptcy have really gone up quite, quite a lot, and so we feel 4.3% is very conservative right now. But we stayed with what we had presented always to the, to staff and council, so that's why we are still staying, staying with 4.3. But I think that's fairly conservative.
Ashu, I did say that I would ask this question. On one of your conceptual models with the town, Lyons Town and Country Park, we do have a parking lot there, or a solar canopy. The concern that one resident bought, and I can see that, is that it's next to a baseball field. And I wanted to address that, to see if, how would that, what kind of, I mean, obviously, if balls are being hit out there, could that create a problem? There, number three. So I know the, the sun is probably the best.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the sun is probably the best, that'd probably be the best place to receive most of the solar energy that comes from the sun, but at the same time, you know, I just want to make sure that that wasn't going to be an issue when balls are being hit out that way, and possibly cracking any of those.
So we actually spent a lot of time and effort meeting with several people to come up with this location. It was really hard because of the number of trees there. So that's what the location we just came up with, working with staff, and, you know, it depends, I don't know, do you think, is it, do you think those balls can get to number three?
I don't, I'm not sure. I'm asking you, because that, this was a question that was brought on your last presentation.
I apologize, but we haven't considered it.
Well, if I may, as you, for a little league coach that coached 10 years, and both my boys go in through there, if you look at the fence, which is 200 feet, the beginning of that, and I know this is maybe not exactly to scale.
It is to scale, but, yeah.
Then that's a pretty lengthy bomb.
Right.
By a left-handed, big 12-year-old to go that far and hit on top of the roof. So I'm going to say by this picture, I have never seen a ball hit that far, and that far foul, to hit on top of that panel.
I was just going to add that our engineers spent a lot of time, and they measure out the distance from home plate to wherever our solar locations are, and make sure that it's well beyond the distance of any baseball. So that was, there was a lot of thought put in Array 3, so.
Well, if your engineers can guarantee that, then I've done my due diligence and answered the question.
Yeah.
So thank you.
By the way, Carolyn Kiesner from NG as well.
Carolyn Kiesner.
Yes. So on, when we're talking about assumptions in the 20-year plan, if you can go back to the maintenance and operations, the $60,000, what would be the cost in year one with all the brand-new equipment and everything basically new?
So the $60,000 is for doing electrical maintenance of the solar projects, for doing, cleaning the solar panels, they'll need to be cleaned, and it's a very, it's a manual task, it takes a lot of hours, days actually, to clean all the panels, and we have to pay prevailing wage to do that. So, so basically, it includes, you know, it's, it's only for the solar project and the streetlights. And the streetlights, we, really, the maintenance that we are doing really comes down to just replacing batteries, which have to be replaced every six to seven years. And each, each streetlight has three batteries, and so it's a lot of money to replace.
They're not cheap.
Yeah, we have, we have all built that into the cost here.
Any other questions for Ashu? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, seeing that this is a public hearing? If you, I'm sorry, you'll need to come up to the podium, please. And it's optional to give your name and address.
I see solar, my name is Martha Garcia, and I see solar everywhere. See, we cannot be Madera getting behind. I see Merced and the city having all those solar panels everywhere. See, I think they will save a lot of energy, because PG&E actually is going higher. That's all I can say. I think everybody will get benefit.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and actually, I agree. Energy costs are certainly not getting any lower, and I think we've all heard on the news recently about PG&E and their plight and the wildfires. And the same thing goes for infrastructure. I mean, as each month passes, Ashu, tell me if I'm wrong, as each, as each month and each quarter passes, infrastructure is not getting any cheaper, it's getting, it's getting more and more expensive. And we cannot reap that savings until we move forward with this project. And I know that we have taken a long time to get to this point. I do want to thank our team, and especially our city manager, Aldo Rodriguez, and Hill de Montoya, making sure that our i's were dotted, our t's were crossed. An almost $19 million project that we need to take on is something we want to make sure that when we enter into this, that we know full well what we're doing for the ratepayer and the community of Madera. We had a project, as you know, at the wastewater treatment plant, that I'm embarrassed to say what it looks like out there. And so a project of this magnitude, what it will look like, the savings we will get, to be able to invest that money back into community projects like North A Street, North B Street, North C Street, and there's many others, that, as was mentioned before, their lights are not dim, their lights are not far between, there are zero lights in these neighborhoods, absolutely zero. And it does become a safety issue. So to be able to take that savings and put it back into our community, we do not have that in our general fund at all at this point. So, and maybe procrastinating was, was on our benefit, not only the much appreciated mistake that you made, Ashu, but I do think that we can get that interest rate just a tick lower than what we originally anticipated at this time.
No doubt that the interest rates have definitely come down over the last one year.
But in either way, I would not.
Price hasn't gone up.
I would not gamble.
It's only come down, so I guess to that extent, you made a great decision in delaying this, so.
Should we wait six more months? Maybe? Is there another mistake?
I'll have to, I'll have to send Carolyn and Steve for the negotiation this time. I'm not going.
Yeah. You made your one mistake for the decade. We understand. It's not going to happen twice. I get it. Well, that being said, I'm certainly in favor of this project and ready to move forward. Councilman Rodriguez?
I just have one last question, and I think you, you stole the thunder with that mistake there, Mr. Mayor, so thank you. But, you know, being that we are investing a big, it's a big amount of money, technology, Ashu, can you just kind of give me your opinion as far as these, these solar panels? I mean, it seems like technology's changing, and you have these companies that are coming with, with better systems and what have you. I mean, we're investing in a 20-year deal, but nevertheless, you know, these technologies... I mean, we're investing in a twenty-year deal, but nevertheless, you know, these technologies do change rapidly.
Right.
And, you know, for the city of Madera, eighteen million dollars, like the mayor just noted, that it's not something that we can just fork out.
Absolutely.
It's something that a resident would probably have to pay through these bonds, and therefore, I ask you.
Yeah.
Give us that honest opinion, since you're in the business, and how is it systems, and, and is there something in that contract that states that if systems do happen to change and are more efficient, are we gonna take that benefit as well?
Okay, so let me, uh, let me, let me answer that. So, um, we've been doing solar for sixteen years now, we started back in two thousand and three, and I was with the same company back then. And, um, you know, we're, we're using technology, which is actually forty years old, in commercial solar panels. Uh, and I might have said these things before to the, to the council, I, I don't remember if this question came up before. But, um, so it's silicon crystalline, uh, panels, they've been around for forty to fifty, fifty years. Uh, SMUD, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, had an installation, which they just removed because they needed the land a couple of years ago, which is forty years, that lasted forty years. The technology, the main commercial technology, really hasn't changed. It is the same technology. What has happened is, in two thousand and three, when we were doing these projects, when we were buying these panels, in the same size of panels that we buy today, we were getting a hundred and seventy-five watts. Today, we are getting four hundred and twenty watts. The panels then were ten percent efficient, the panels today are twenty-one percent efficient. So they convert twenty-one percent of the light into electricity. So, so that's what the change, it's been incremental, you know, one percent, half a percent every year. We hear, you know, MIT coming up with the wearable solar, or Stanford coming up with, um, solar that can be put on windows, but none of these technologies have taken off, they have not been commercialized, you know? What's commercial is this technology. So, so there hasn't been any rapid change in technology, it's been very incremental. Um, you know, we did Fresno State, um, twelve years ago, it's exactly the same panel, you know, just more packed into the panel now. Um, so, so that's one thing. The second thing, which I always like to say is, you know, we're installing these panels, we're guaranteeing them, the panels are guaranteed for twenty-five years. When you do this, when you, if you decide to move forward with the project, what you're signing off, after the financing is all done and clear, is a cash flow analysis. And you're, you know, so you'll say that this project, with the equipment that we are providing, is gonna save three hundred thousand dollars a year. No matter what happens to technology the next day, that doesn't change. You're still saving three hundred thousand, the decision that you made today will be financially sound, you're still making that. Can it happen that five years down the road, something breakthrough technology comes, and these panels are ten percent of the price that they are? I mean, nobody can predict that that won't happen. Would it mean that if you would've waited five years, you might have done, you might have gotten a better deal? Yeah, you probably could have, if that happens. But, you know, that still doesn't mean that the decision you take today is a, is there's anything wrong with that decision, because you're still guaranteed that cash flow. So that decision is, you know, that doesn't change with what happens next. That decision doesn't change, and, you know, a little facetiously, I say that, you know, if you keep waiting for techno-, technology to change, you'll never buy an iPhone, you'll never buy a computer, you know, because there's always something better coming up. So at some point, you have to, you know, uh, sometime, you have to take a decision and move forward, yeah.
Mayor Protemontes has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Marisol. I wanna see the, um, slide with the, um, charging stations, real quick. I just wanted to see, um, where Mr. Garcia is gonna be, so we can get that, that tour, right?
Is that Miss Tesla?
There's gonna be ten of them, right? I just, you know, wanna make that point to Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, there's five in the back, um, I think there were three in the front of City Hall, two in the back, I don't know if John, um, so it was three in the front, two in the back, and then five at, um, maybe there is a picture here, actually. Five at Public Works, five at City Hall. I thought we had a picture of exactly where the spot is, but I don't see it. But I do know there's three in the front of City Hall, two in the back, and five at Public Works.
Mr. Garcia will be easier to find. Councilman Garcia?
Um, I for one am very impressed by this. I, I had a long conversation with Mr. Rodriguez in, um, driving to and from the, um, League of Cities, and so, we went over this project, and he explained to me all the benefits, uh, that he anticipated from this, it's very exciting. Um, I, for one, you know, am very, um, uh, thankful to your, to your staff and yourself, who have put this, uh, together, to, uh, show us the benefits, uh, both economic and for our communities, because...
Actually skipped over that, excuse me, but, uh, and, and please continue, I'll, I'll, I'll add my comments afterwards.
Yeah, um, so there are other benefits to, to our community that you're gonna be putting into this project. It's not only here, you're gonna save X amount of dollars, which is very, very good, but also, there are community benefits, uh, for, uh, also for employment. You, you spoke about the, uh, the interns, the student interns, uh, those are all benefits that come with a package like this, and I, I very much appreciate this, and, uh, I, uh, I fully support.
No, and, and thank you, that just reminded me, when we, when you talked about community benefits, the contract, uh, we have, uh, we have said that, you know, over ninety percent of the labor that we use will be union, union labor, and we couldn't make a commitment, but we said we will try that twenty percent of that, uh, is local to Madera, not county, but city of Madera. So we will definitely, um, we're definitely gonna try that. Thank you.
Well, just wanna make sure, um, uh, your contract states nine-three-six-three-six to nine-three-six-three-nine.
It does.
That would be city and county.
Yeah, it actually has the zip codes in it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to council, for any further discussion or action. I'm sorry, Mr. Rodriguez, said I cut, was there something else?
So just to add one more point, um, so, so the action this evening, um, can would be, so staff is recommending that the council approve the contract or the agreement with NG for the eighteen point eight-four million dollars, I believe it is.
I didn't know we'd get the final.
Eighteen point eight-four-eight million dollars. With that being said, the financing is not before the council this evening. So the coun-, uh, so the financing for this project would come back for any reason, if the council elects, or if the city does not receive favorable financing, and favorable financing is real, it's largely up to the city council to decide what's favorable and what's not favorable, at that point, we would not be out of pocket any dollars to NG. Um, so again, so the financing is not before the council this evening, it's the agreement to move the project forward. With that being said, if the council, um, would wanna modify the project, you all obviously have that, if there's certain elements that you would, uh, can like to remove from the project, or add from the, or, or say add to the project, uh, that's at the council's, um, discretion this evening. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Any further questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Item C one, as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, sir.
Looking forward to continuing, uh, working with NG. Moving on to item C two, this is also a public hearing relating to rezoning of two parcels. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and consider introduction of an ordinance rezoning two parcels encompassing approximately point-two-nine acres located approximately two hundred feet west of the intersection of Sonora and Rush Streets. Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Mayor. Um, so, um, while I'm standing before you, and our agenda says that Chris Boyle was gonna be making the presentation, as the council and the community is fully aware, Mr. Boyle recently accepted, uh, the Development Services Director position with the city of Bakersfield. And while we're extremely happy that he left, we're also bummed at the same time. However, with that being said, we, um, so we feel very comfortable, kinda, we have a great staff in-house, and with us this evening is Jesus Orozco, who's been with the city for a number of years, he's, he's one of our two assistant planners, and he'll be making the presentation this evening. While Jesus has plenty of experience before the planning commission, he's been doing it for a couple of years now, uh, I believe this is his first time before the city council. So with that, uh, so please welcome him, thank you.
Welcome, Jesus.
Good evening, council, nice to make your formal acquaintance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before you is an introduction of ordinance rezoning, uh, two properties. Uh, the subject properties are located south of Wilson Avenue and north of Rush Street, just immediately to the northeast corner of the Maggiore Drive-In Theater. The planning commission at the October, uh, hearing approved a precise plan contingent upon the approval of rezoning by council and reapproving the negative declaration. The project consists of an eight apartment, uh, an eight apartment, uh, an eight-unit apartment complex, um, as you can see on the screen. The, the request here is to rezone from a high-density residential to a PD fifteen-hundred Plan Development Zone district. Currently, the, the current design, zoning designation would only allow for seven units. With the rezoning, it would allow for a number of eight. The council will also be taking action on a ne-, negative declaration, consistent with California Environmental Quality Act. That being said, uh, planning commission and staff recommend that council consider public testimony, adopt the negative declaration, and introduce an ordinance rezoning two parcels located to the north of Rush Street and south of Wilson Avenue, from the R-three High Density Residential to the PD fifteen-hundred Plan Development Zone district. That completes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Short and sweet, I like it. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, please come forward. Please, and I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman, did you wanna have your question for Jesus before?
Sure, and maybe both of them can answer it, so.
My apologies.
Jesus, when I look at the zoning, can you put that, uh, slide there? Everything's sonar three, so bringing a PD fifteen-hundred there, what, what does that do to the neighborhood itself? I mean, what, what can we expect with that type of zoning?
Currently, to the north of the, uh, of that proposal are, um, multifamily complexes. There wouldn't be much difference from surrounding neighborhoods. I believe to the south, there's also multifamily, there might be within the vicinity, uh, a couple of single-family homes. Um, the precise plan does address, um, potential impacts to those, um, to those adjoining, um, single families, for example, downshielding any, um, exterior light to be retained within the project site.
And, um, you said that up north, there, you have similar, this particular zoning that's now, willing to allow for seven units, you said, and the PD fifteen-hundred would allow for the amount that's being presented?
Right, yes, would be maximum density per the general plan. So, um, if you can see from this aerial view, I'm just to the north, uh, th-, those are all multifamily projects. To the east and west, there are single-family, um, and to the south, there is also some multifamily, as well, some mixture of single-family housing as well.
Yeah, and I know earlier, I mean, obviously, we heard some testimony from some residents, and obviously, there's no affordable housing, and I think, uh, uh, Mr. Uvaldo Garcia, is that correct? I had mentioned that this is one of his projects, that I'd like to, uh, ease on that, and, and possibly bring back more affordable housing. My concerns are only for the residents around, if there was any, uh, uh, negative impacts that they would have because of that. And I think you mentioned something with the lighting and all, but, uh...
Right. At this point, staff has not received any concerns from any...
Okay. Well, thank you, Jesus, I appreciate that.
Good evening again, city council. Again, this is the smallest project that I'm, um, of the three that I mentioned, and this particular project is a perfect example of what I mean. Um, I really hope this doesn't come back to haunt me, but, um, this project presents a perfect example of why we don't have a, a, affordable housing. Um, this project is based on a pro-, uh, an apartment project that I designed in the city of Sacramento, uh, last year, and it was actually referred to become, uh, to, to, to receive an award from the AIA. And when I presented it to Mr. Boyle, not to jab him or anything, but to him, it was crap. Um, he didn't like the colors that I used, uh, he gave me all kinds of comments that, which modified the, the project so much, that I don't think this is gonna be, it's gonna be lower, lower, uh, rents, but I don't think it'd be, it would be the affordable housing that you're looking for. This project in Sacramento only addresses the front facade with, uh, with regards to architectural features, with such as stone, um, siding, and, uh, metal awnings. Mr. Boyle told me that I either put it all around, or, so, Mr. Boyle was really strict with regards to his, his conditions, it was either my way or the highway. And what I, when I actually presented the project to, uh, the city planning, uh, they absolutely loved it, but they don't realize that if we want a Taj Mahal in every single neighborhood, we're just never gonna have the affordable housing that we need. It's just impossible. No builder is gonna build a hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar-square-foot building and rent it for fifty cents a square foot. It's just not gonna happen, we need to wake up and realize that. Unless somebody comes in, either the government or the local municipal, municipality, and says, "Here's fifty cents for the dollar that you spent." And then that, I could see that happening, but, you know, um...
But to that point, Mr. Garcia, I, 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 I don't wanna go backwards, I wanna go forward.
Yeah, absolutely, so...
But Madera has standards, and I'm proud of those standards, in that we don't just say, because it's a, it's a cost issue.
Right.
And, and we want, with this infield project, to upgrade not only from this project, but the surrounding areas around it. So, first, on a personal note, I'm, I'm proud of the standards that we have, to make sure that we move forward, and that we give the residents that look of the, the dollar fifty a square foot. Maybe it doesn't necessarily have to, uh, be granite, if you will, but they still deserve, in all neighborhoods, at least that look. So, let's, let's, let's talk about moving from this day forward, and not what should've been done in the past.
Okay, well, uh, yeah, at this point, we're already approved, but, um, so we, we, we had a couple of issues with regards to the, uh, uh, the neighborhood, because there is, there is a, a single-family home next to us, and what we did, in order to not be a three-story structure right next to them, what we did is we, we, um, we shaved the building on the side, so that you only have two stories. So, on the two-story side, only faces the, the, the single family, the three-story side faces the park, basically, the, the park that is next to the, next to the, next to the building. Any other questions that I could answer? Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to take this opportunity to, to, to beat on.
I, I have a question, it's kinda related, but, you know...
Sure.
To move forward. Um, what was it, what is the cost, if you can tell us, or you'll tell us?
Absolutely, yeah.
What's the cost of designing a project like this?
Thirty thousand dollars. No, my, my fee is thirty thousand dollars. The, we still have, uh, a civil engineer that has to be involved, he's gonna be between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, uh, and then on top of that, we have, um, the city plan check fee, um, structural engineering. A, a small project like this would easily run between sixty and seventy thousand dollars for this little apartment project, and...
To get it on paper like this?
To get it on paper, yes. To, to build this project, the, the, I just spoke with the owner earlier today, his construction budget's five hundred thousand, and he's gonna blow through eighty thousand, just getting it, just getting it through the city. So that's why it's just so hard. A project like this, um, in Sacramento is two-point-six million. Here, five hundred, six hundred thousand. I'm more than, make, I make my, if we keep our, our meetings short, I'm available anytime, all the time, if you guys wanna run numbers, 'cause I, I run numbers, I work as far down as LA, and as high north as Reading, only in California, though.
Any other questions, Mr. Garcia? Did I ask if there's anyone in the public that wish to speak on this one? If not, I'll, I'm now asking if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, please come forward. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, how close is it to the drive-in?
To the drive-in?
It's just like fifty yards.
Think you could throw a rock from there?
Yeah.
It's roughly about a hundred-and-fifty feet due east of the drive-in.
So, um...
Strong hand.
You have, um, front-row seat to the movies.
From those, from the required balconies, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know...
Do you own the drive-in?
Yeah.
No, you can, you know, uh, get the sound from the radio.
That'd be great, another amenity.
Yeah, there you go, the price, the price just went up.
Should've thought about that one, I thought, I thought, I thought about everything.
Price just went up.
Yeah.
Good point, Mr. Councilman.
You know.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I will ask one last question, and, and maybe either Jesus or Octavia, you can answer this, I'm sorry, Uvaldo. But, you know, the impact that it has, obviously, there's more families coming into this condensed area. What impacts does that have to, like, parks? I mean, is there anything in there, any, any type of impacts that, that you'd address for, for parks, only because of the higher density?
Have you seen the, our site plan?
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it now, so.
It has a park.
Okay, no, that's what I mean, so, that park is gonna be able to mitigate for the density, is what I'm saying, for the.
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh, the city of Madera has one of the most stringent requirements with regards to parking in open space. Right now, any two-bedroom unit requires two-point-two-five parking stalls, and it requires seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet of open space, which means that if you have a one-acre project that is zoned for PD-1500, you're allowed to put twenty-nine units on it, is that correct? Okay, but, but, in order to comply with all the other requirements with parking and open space, you would have to have an additional acre just to provide for those other. So, it's just extremely difficult. I've never seen anything in, anywhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
So, just one point of clarification, can the onsite open space is not technically a park in the traditional sense, it's not a city park, it's privately owned, it's gonna be privately maintained by the property owner, and so this is onsite required open space for the, for the benefit of the tenants that are gonna live there.
So, not access to the other communities, just for the tenants, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, cor- correct, but I think if they have a, their own local, I'm not saying that they're not gonna visit any other park, but they, more than likely, the kids will be playing there ninety percent of the time.
Any other questions?
I apologize if I sound direct, I, I, I just, I, I, I don't have, I'm dyslexic, and I, I don't have a filter, I just, I, I don't know which other word to say, I just, I just speak very direct, I apologize if I sound rude, I, I don't mean to.
Councilman Garcia.
I appreciate your candor, actually, and I'd love to have a conversation of this nature.
Absolutely.
It is interesting, it's picked my interest, uh, have, to have a discussion about what you went through to get this project in, and considering we do have a need for similar projects in, in our, in our community. So, I, I will share my contact information with you, and I'd love to have a conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I apologize if I haven't been to more council meetings and more get-togethers, I, I, I work sixteen hours a day, and it's really difficult, apologize.
This is introduction of an ordinance, we have title that needs to be read? Right, but we still need to read the first part of title.
Yes.
Is that correct? If, any other questions from council? So, on this one, and I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council, and I'll ask for Alicia to read title on item C2. This is the part beginning with introduction of an ordinance rezoning the two parcels.
Introduction of an ordinance rezoning two parcels encompassing approximately zero-point-two-nine acres, located approximated, approximated two-hundred feet west of the intersection of Sonora and Rush Streets, from the R3 Zone District to the PD-1500 Plan Development Zone District, and approval of negative declaration.
Mr. Mayor, wish, or move to waive further reading and introduce item C2 as presented?
Second.
It's been moved to waive, waive further reading and introduce, and also seconded. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Jesus.
Excuse me, Mayor, as Keith is walking up to the podium, a few minutes ago, I misspoke, I believe I unintentionally said that I was happy that Chris left, that's not what I meant. I meant to say that I'm happy for Chris.
Yes.
That's exactly what we took it from.
But I'm bummed that he left, thank you very much.
Now you trying to correct it, huh?
Working those sixteen-hour-long days like Mr. Garcia, we get it.
All right, we understood completely. Moving on to item D1, this is the update on the status of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, otherwise known as the GSP, and receive updates and public comments and provide council input. Mr. Hellman.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Since the last GSA meeting, uh, the, we've done a few things, the GSP coordination meeting, which was a listening session that occurred on October twenty-second occurred, we had at least nine comments that were received during that, many of those verbal. I haven't seen most of them, they, they've been sent to consultants to go ahead and review. The Technical Advisory Committee also interviewed the top two firms that proposed on the preparation of a data management system, or DMS for short. The Technical Advisory Committee was able to make a final selection on that, I think we came up with a consultant that can go ahead and provide us a good piece of software that will maintain the data that is collected. That software will, as proposed, will be open source, so if, if the GSAs choose to move to a different consultant in the future, they'll be able to go ahead and do that. The decision on which consultant, I think we're there, but I, it's not reportable at this time. And then not a lot has occurred on the draft groundwater sustainability plan, the comment period is still open till November eleventh. On November fifteenth, the Technical Advisory Committee will go ahead and get together and review the comments. Our consultants are actually reviewing those, and they will prevent, present their recommendations or their thoughts on what they say within those comments. The last meeting, there was a, a, a comment with regard to what was included in one of them. One of the comments that I recall is, uh, the concerns with regard to low-income residents that reside in the county. They want, certain residents, one makes sure that they, they have access to water. So, to that end, one of the concepts that's being proposed, or one of the proposals, actually, is that there would be a mitigation fund to assist in drilling new wells and providing water. The city in itself, when there's residents that need water within the proximity of the city, we regularly receive requests, I can't talk tonight, we will receive requests and we'll take those to council, and we'll go ahead and move outside the city limits one parcel at a time. Most recently, we moved, uh, had a water line constructed into the county, actually, the water, the county constructed that water line, and it has the ability to serve fourteen residences east of the city. The last thing I think I wanna go ahead and mention is that the, this will be coming, the GSP, Groundwater Sustainability Plan, will be coming back to the council on December eighteenth for adoption. I will be bringing back the consultant that has the greater expertise than I to go ahead and discuss that and answer questions for you, should you have any. With that, if there's any questions, I'll try to go ahead and answer them for you.
Thank you for that update, any questions from council for Keith? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, or have any questions as well, please come forward. Seeing none, looks like this is just an update, there's no action required?
That's right.
Wonderful, thank you very much for that update, Keith, we look forward to having that come back to council soon.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D2, this is second reading and consideration of adoption of an ordinance rezoning six parkels, six, I did that last week, huh? Parkels.
Parkels? Something about parkels.
I don't know what it is. Rezoning six parcels encompassing approximately one-point-five acres located on the southwest corner of the intersection of West Seventh and South G Streets. Jesus.
That is correct, Mayor, um, this is for the Madera County District Attorney's Office. Tonight's action, you will be doing a second reading for a zoning from R, R3 High Density to the PF Public Facilities Zone District. The rezon was reviewed and a resolution recommending approval was determined by the planning commission in September, the, the item was introduced to city council October sixteenth. That, uh, staff recommends council waive further reading and adopt ordinance of the, of the rezon of the subject properties. That completes my presentation.
Fantastic, any questions? Uh, once again, anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to Alicia for title.
Thank you, Mayor, adoption of an ordinance rezoning six parcels encompassing approximately one-point-five acres located on the southwest corner of intersection of West Seventh and South G Streets from the R3 High Density to the PF Public Facility Zone District.
Mr. Mayor, move to waive further reading and adopt item D2 as presented? Second.
It has been moved and seconded to waive further reading and adopt the ordinance as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, moving on to item D3. This is consideration of a request by the Madera Opportunities for Resident Enrichment and Services, otherwise known as Mores, to allow prepayment of the special tax associated with the CFD two-thousand-five-dash-zero-one. Jesus.
So, before I jump into the request, I'll, I'll just give a little brief background on the project. This request is, is, uh, for the downtown Madera Veterans and Family Housing Project. The project was originally reviewed by, by both the council and the planning commission in October of two thousand eighteen. The project scope required a general plan amendment, rezon, two precise plans, and environmental determination. The project scope entails two residential projects encompassing forty-eight affordable housing units. The two project sites cumulatively make up about zero-point-eight-six acres. The, the, in order to develop the project, it will be required to annex into CFD two-thousand-five dash oh-one. Just a little bit of redundancy to previous workshops and presentations, the purpose of the CFD is an annual tax to finance, police, protection, fire, maintenance of parks and storm drain systems, and so forth. The CFD was formed for the purpose of funding those gaps between the development and the cost of maintaining those services. A fiscal analysis was determined within the general plan that identified this need. The original annual assessment for multifamily was of two-thousand-eighty-six dollars per unit, has increased to four, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight. The tax does go directly into the general fund, and utilization of taxes purposely brought such that the city might finance previously the aforementioned police-fire services. The request here is a prepayment of a special tax associated with CFD two-thousand-five dash oh-one. This prepayment will entail a payment of six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty-two cents, and that's the future value of what is currently, the current rate for a unit would be four-hundred-twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents. This number, this six-thousand number was calculated using a future value calculation. I'm not, my background's not in finance, I can't give particulars as to how that works, but essentially, the, the four-hundred-and-twenty dollars, if you were to see that number thirty years from now, which is the request for, they'd be essentially paying six-thousand-nine-hundred dollars and ten cents, or ten dollars. Cumulative payment would be of three-thousand-three-hundred-and-one, three-thousand-three, three-hundred and thirty-one thousand, six-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents for, for all forty-eight units, and this prepayment would be for a thirty-year term. Within the letter, the, the applicant did state is, the reason they're requesting is, is because of financial feasibility. With affordable housing projects, funding is not necessarily available through, throughout a long-term, therefore, they're, they're, they're wishing to, they're wishing the council consider this prepayment option. That being said, uh, funding might not be available in the future. Staff recommends the council authorize prepayment of a special tax for the downtown Madera Veterans Family Housing Project in the amount of six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty cents per unit, for a total amount of three-hundred-thirty-one thousand dollars, six-hundred-ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents to cover the thirty-year term. That completes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Jesus regarding this one from council? Councilman Rodriguez.
I, I don't have a, a question, Mr. Mayor, but I do have a comment, I just wanted to express my gratitude to Jesus, I know that it's not easy being out there and presenting, so being that it is your first time, I'm just glad, and I commend you for taking up on this role, and you're doing a great job, so keep it up. Wanted to thank you for the presentation, thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
Oh, absolutely, he's definitely three-for-three at the plate.
There you go.
Great job, great job. Any other questions or comments from council? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve item D3 as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item D3 as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great job, Jesus. No admin reports, we'll move on to council member reports, announcements, future agenda items, or discussions, I'll start at my far right with Councilman Robinson.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Gallegos?
Nothing to report.
Uh, Councilman Garcia, anything else you wanna add, certainly give you the opportunity to do so.
Actually, no, I just wanted to thank the council for taking that into consideration, what we talked about earlier, thank you very much for that, I really do appreciate it for the community. Also, I'd just like to mention that we have a lot of different people who are in support and are coming from the community to support, and that's really, it, it warms your heart to see folks come out and help the community, so, to them, thank you very much.
Got some.
Councilman Holly?
Oh, he forgot some. I'll do it, go ahead. Is it my turn?
It's your turn, Councilman Holly.
The birthday. Okay, I'll do it.
Is it my birthday?
Councilman Garcia and myself, we attended a birthday party for a lady who just turned one-hundred years old in our community at the Madera Rehabilitation Facility. And next month, in December, we have another lady who's gonna be turning one-hundred years old, and her name is Lucille Murphy, who'll be turning one-hundred. So, you know, the reason I say that, very often that we see folks live that longevity of being a hundred and able to sit and talk and be around you, so, and that, I just thank our city for honoring those kind of people who reached that great age, I'm trying to get there. Also, sad notes, I just lost a few family members in the last couple of months, I lost a niece, and today, I lost a, a real good friend of mine who was my ex-wife, she passed away this morning, so we wanna just pray for the families and our city as a whole, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, we'll certainly pray for, for you and your family. Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I was scheduled to attend the, the USC Prize Forum there for leaders in the community, and unfortunately, I was able to, unfortunately, I didn't attend because I came down with the cold, and I also did not attend the intergovernmental meeting that was held, so I hope that I can waste some time for maybe the mayor or, um, council member Montes to kinda highlight on what took place, and maybe what the next steps are for, for our community and our, especially our tri-agency, so, with that, I'll wait my, my time to Councilman Montes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Montes.
Thank you very much, council member. Uh, we talked about, uh, on the intergovernmental meeting, wasn't prepared for this, but we talked about a lot of financing options, special districts, and just looking at tools to try to get some economic development sparked. It was a good conversation, we had a pretty good presenter, very knowledgeable. I think that it's kind of hard to get everybody from two cities and a county to agree on where we need, we need to put those resources, but I think, um, all that information, again, it's not gonna work everywhere, 'cause there's certain zones that, you know, certain geographic areas that, that you can, you're allowed to put those zones in. But I think maybe that's something that we can talk about in the future and bring back, maybe have a consultant do something, talk to us specifically about how we can utilize those tools. Other than that, it was, uh, there wasn't a lot, too much discussion there, but it was very interesting, and, and, you know, I'm relatively new here, so I'm like, hey, why don't we do this, why don't we do that? And, uh, manager had to explain to me, okay, this, these are the constraints, these are the things, so I'm like, okay. Another thing I wanted to talk about, to put on the agenda for future agenda item, especially with the, the conversations that we've been having today about our housing issues, I don't think there's gonna be a one magic bullet to take it down, I think it's gonna be more of a death by a thousand cuts, right? So, one of the things that I wanted to put on the radar, and maybe for a future agenda item, is inviting Build It Green to come out, and, and the reason why I asked Mr. Garcia of what his costs are for those plans, is there could be a potential to have something like a standard plan. like a standard plan for a multi-housing family, so that can take out those costs for people who are trying to develop. And, I mean, it's not gonna be a multi-family project like that, but if we can offer something like that to our developers or to our residents, that's gonna eliminate some of that cost, I think that'll help alleviating some of the burden. We can encourage other people to come in and build infill projects. So, I know we have a packed wish list, but if we can put that on the agenda at some point, or at least to have discussion, or have, put it on Build It Green to come out here and do a presentation for us, you know, they can do the staff report. I think that would be something, because we have to look at a lot of different things. And everybody, everybody's working on different projects, everybody wants to advocate for what they want to advocate for, I'm a little bit more of a policy geek, so I think that, to me, it's easier to understand, easier to bring forward. So, if I can request that.
I would agree. I'm sorry, was that all, Mayor Potem? I would totally agree. Going back years of redevelopment and what redevelopment did for the city of Madera and cities across the state was exactly that. The infill projects we did in the Parkwood area and the east side of Madera, South A, B, and C Streets, some of these projects was exactly what it was designed to do, and when we had the carpet pulled out from under us, under us, I mean, not only from infill projects, but sidewalks and lighting and things like that, it just was really difficult. And to your point on the intergovernmental, that's what we talked about, the EIDs and opportunity zones, it's kind of redevelopment light, if you will, or I don't want to say a loophole, but it's a way to be able to use that tax increment and put it back into our community. So, I thought it was, I thought it was very informative, and again, it's gonna take the city and county working together to get those things done. And I want to thank my council and everybody in the audience that's still here and staff for welcoming the city community. They're very, very appreciative of that, and I thought a send-off for Les was absolutely fantastic. It's not often that somebody spends twenty-eight years anywhere anymore, and so he's certainly a gem and will be missed. And Halloween, there was, there was downtown, I think Love Madera, put a downtown Halloween thing together, and I drove by, and there seemed like quite a few people, and not just downtown, but at Pan Am Center and the couple, I think the John Wells Center and a few other places. I swung by PD, and it looked like a huge taco truck at the time, I didn't think they were passing out candy, it was like a huge taco truck, but they were passing out candy. What was absolutely awesome is I saw the same families that would walk to PD, walk downtown, walk to the areas that were passing out candy, in kind of a trunk-or-treat, if you will, or participating. It was absolutely awesome to see that. Another community event where people come out and support, another family event was awesome. And on the steps of City Hall a couple of weeks ago, the same thing happened with the prayer group, where they simply wanted to pray on the steps of City Hall for various groups, and part of the group that they prayed for, and they want to continue the fourth Thursday of every month, on the steps of City Hall is for our city, and for the people that live here, the people employed at City Hall, for government in general, and I've always, I always say, you can never have too much prayer, and I thought that was very nice of them to do so. And our fire station is coming along nicely, I think we're slated, I was talking with Anthony Garcia back there, I think maybe January. Our transit facility vet, are we looking at her about the same time? Housing projects are actually on an uptick, so there's not a community anywhere in the state of California that has plenty of housing. That is one of the top three issues along with homelessness that everybody's facing. But I will say this, it's a process, it's not cheap, and at times it can be expensive, and I am open to any avenue that would reduce that cost for the builder or developer, our investor, but at the same time, personally, I always feel that we owe it to our residents to make sure that they, they still have a safe, quality roof over their head. It's not just about throwing something together and call it affordable housing. Our residents and our community deserves better than that. So, as we have these discussions, whatever we can do to reduce that cost and still provide a safe living environment, I'm all for it. So, those were all the things that I had, but it looks like Councilman Holly has something to add.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, apologize for not bringing this up.
That's all right.
I'd like to see if we can put on our agenda. I've talked to the Director of Housing Authority that, still they're having a Housing Authority meeting on our second Wednesdays, that we can move it to one of our council meetings, because, you know, we used to have housing and redevelopment, but what the agendas as housing have now is not really no more than an hour long, or sometime hour and a half. Talked with Sally about it, and a few of the council members, and thinking that, you know, something that we need to look at and bring back and talk about, by moving that to one of our meetings, still having that second meeting.
Personally, I'm open for the discussion, but I know, I'm not sure if that's appropriate now to put an agenda item for Housing Authority, are you talking about, I mean, we're all the same board, I get that.
Yes, yeah, I mean.
We meet next week at Housing, is it too late to add that? So, it would have to be at the December meeting, if we're discussing the agenda dates and times for Housing. Okay. But at least Sally's not in her head, so I think we have that direction. And I'm certainly open to the discussion, but I would like to ask my colleagues if they would like to have that discussion as well before we give direction.
We can certainly entertain that, Mr. Mayor, but I also want to loop back to Potem Montes' consideration regarding the discussion that he had brought up. I'm not sure, did we have a consensus of that, so that we can bring that back to, give that direction to our city manager, that we want to see something with respects to the...
I'm sorry, that's a good point. I believe so, but I really didn't formally ask, but I...
Because I thought that was pretty important and a priority also.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I mean, obviously, we heard it today with the housing need.
Yeah, no, it's a great point.
For sure, I think that'd be something that we can give direction to, Arnoldo, to bring that back as a future.
Thank you. No, I agree. Thank you for that. Okay. With that, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening, and I will ask for a closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. For closed session this evening, we have liability claims pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine five, agency claimed against City of Madera, and the claims are Allstate ASO Luzvia Gomez, Lales, I'm not sure how to pronounce this, Lalezari Law Firm ASO Luzvia Gomez, Lalezari Law Firm ASO Luzvia Gomez, Lalezari Law Firm ASO Armando Via Gomez, Lalezari Law Firm ASO Juan Pablo Via Gomez, and EZ Evergreen Lawn Care and Maintenance, Inc., Agreement and Maintenance Services.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session for the items under G2 of the agenda. All council members were present. With respect to the claims one through five concerning the Villa Gomez family, the those claims all related to the same incident that occurred on September 30th, that on July 26, 2019 where Madera Area Express was allegedly proceeded into the intersection of S.A. Street and East Sixth Street impacting the insured car. And their claims were denied unanimously by the City Council, 7-0. The City Council also considered the claim by Evergreen Lawn Care and Maintenance Service regarding claims for unpaid invoices from June through August 2019 and invoices submitted to the city for services rendered in 2018 in the amount of $23,244.65 and also claiming payment penalties and potential attorney's fees. The City Council also denied that claim unanimously.
Thank you very much for that. Before we adjourn, can I ask who provided the cute paw cookies?
I think it was from Madera. I have a thank you note also, the ones that were part of the homecoming parade.
With that, everybody, meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.